Ladies and gentlemen, please face hard to the right where for Lord Mayor of Liverpool, councillor Christine Banks.
To advise members that apologies for absence have been received from councillors Paul Brandt, Laurence Brown, Jerome Calvert, Angela Coleman, Michelle Corrigan, Linnie Hennigan, Ross Gladon, Jenny Smokes, Mary Roserson, Jeremy Wolfson, Alice Bennett and Bill Jones. Are there any further apologies to report?
Well, just to that very obvious, councillor Kevin O'Callaghan agreed to the family this morning, he may get here, but it's preemptive apology just in case, not that close.
Okay, I'd like to emphasise that this is a key meeting, can I therefore request that everyone present, including the public, treat this meeting accordingly, which will enable the business to be dealt with affectionately. The use of social media and films to record proceedings is permitted during the council meeting, that does not extend to the filming of members of the public, and any more mission to film proceedings are also critically directed to the very sensitive issue of filming children without the express permission of their parents. Can I remind members of the council, the government elected members tweeting and using social media, if you are using your tablet to follow the agenda at that time, would you wish to tweet or record proceedings, please do so at the back of the chamber so as not to disturb any speaker? May I also advise members that the recent death of former councillor Kevin Morrison, who served as the councillor for two local stoney clock ward from 2014 to 2018, and extend on behalf of the council to his family its sincere condolences at this sad time. Also the recent death of councillor Alan Dean's mother-in-law, and extend on behalf of the council to Alan, Liz and family its sincere condolences at this sad time. Also we wish to extend to our Jewish community at the end of fast of Yom Kippur.
If I may, your permission, I was just asking to pass my deepest thanks to those members of the council offices we've got in touch for a particular period for us, it was a great conference to have those comments made, we tried to respond to everyone we've got in touch, we'll give them one more, if you may, if you did, I apologise for that.
Declaration of the interest, can I remind members that you are only required to declare at meetings any disposable pecuniary or prejudicial interests, in which case the member will need to leave the chamber during the consideration of the item, are there any such deprecations?
Can I advise the council that four statements have been received, the first statement by Bishop... Are there any sort of deprecations? I haven't got them on this page, they're on the window. Okay, the minutes of the city council meeting held on the 18th of July 2018, we agreed to the following amendments, the minutes 274 to provide that the director of regeneration and employment be given the following delegated authority, to extend all powers under the Safety Sports Grounds Act 1975 and the regulator of the Form 5 Safety Order 2005 for all sports grounds, including Brutus Park and Unfair, are those minutes agreed?
Lord Mayor, you have to say my name this one. Lord Mayor, they are my usual presence for the recent...
But my, I'm not proposed in minutes.
While the minutes of the two extraordinary city council meetings held on the 18th of July 2018 agreed, are agreed, councillor Miller.
Just one minor amendment, I don't think your councillor Mark can do, but that's what it says in the minutes, that's Lord Mayor.
Councillor Henry?
Lord Mayor, my name is Anderson Downs, I've had the first extraordinary meeting with the people of the city as well.
So councillor Swallow and councillor Henry. And councillor Martin Tyler, and you chose, and Miss Hagan. How's your name? Okay, are they agreed? Can I advise the council that these two statements have been received, first statement by Bishop Paul Best, Bishop of Liverpool, in relation to Isenmann on the agenda, which do you think is appropriate, Bishop?
Thank you, Lord Mayor, thank you, friends, I'm not sure this is working, I do have a voice like before, come on, if I need it, I'll give them a second and then I'll just shout, it's working fantastic, thank you very much. Friends, I'm enormously grateful for the privilege of being able to address you, and in particular to look at this business in universal credit, thank you for the invitation and for the privilege of speaking. In his speech to the TransUnion Congress last week, the Archbishop of Canterbury said about universal credit, quote, "We know that it has left too many people worse off than they were, putting people at a heightened risk of hunger." Now, in Liverpool's churches, we recognise that as a painful daily reality, 74% of my own Anglican churches are actively involved in running or supplying food banks. In Liverpool, the leaders of the faith and voluntary sector are used to and comfortable with speaking out when we see substantial injustice done. So this week, the Roman Catholic Archbishop of Liverpool, Archbishop Malcolm and I have together written to the press to advocate the delay and pausing of universal credit implementation. Couple of years ago, I was asked to be the joint chair of the Citywide Strategy Group on Fairness in Tackling Poverty, I gladly agreed to that, it's a privilege to serve on that group and to chair it together with councillor Corbyn. As part of that group's work, we've been listening to our partners and taking evidence on the impact of welfare reforms generally, and more specifically recently, the introduction rolling out of universal credit. I give warm credit to Martin Jürgens and his colleagues on the start of this council for the excellent work they did in a past-on cumulative impact assessment of benefit cuts and for the excellent current work on the unintended consequences of universal credit. If this implementation rolls out in a few days' time, I confidently, sorrowfully and angrily expect that there will be greater hardship in our city. Of course, the churches will do what they can to alleviate that hardship, but the Archbishop and I said in our letter that Christians are increasingly nauseated by growing talk in the nation of the undeserving poor and by social policies that treat human beings and human flourishing as if they were debit lines on a balance sheet. It is no longer tolerable to see people who I believe were made in the image of God living in increasing despair, so friends, I strongly support the terms of the motion you look at later, that universal credit must be paused, reviewed and fixed now, not later. I stand together with many other faith communities for that justice, thank you very much.
May Anderson? And the second statement by Amy Summers, on spirit level, in relation to Isenmann on the agenda, standing with our trans community, Amy, would you like to follow forward?
Firstly, I would like to thank the Lord Mayor and councillor, particularly councillor Doyle, for giving myself this opportunity to speak on behalf of the transgender community of Liverpool and their appeal. I would also like to thank you all for supporting the motions standing with our trans community, trans women are women. I will take this opportunity to present to the council some points which could be considered and hopefully agreed and implemented to show solidarity against any trans people in the country, and to show the people of the world that Liverpool is a place where anyone can come and express themselves regardless of their gender identity and be welcomed by the warm and lovable people of this very city without the fear of hatred, bigotry or harm. Point one, Transgender Day of Remembrance, T-Daw, takes place every year on the 20th November in over 185 cities across the world, it is a time for members of the transgender community to come together and remember all those who have died violently at the hands of others during the war last year, and no other reason would have been transgender. The event takes place all day and culminates in an evening vigil. Basically, we would like to thank the council for the trans life reasons ceremony and also the trans life outside today, which takes place in the afternoon of this day in this very building, and we also further respectfully take this opportunity to request that the Lord Mayor or one of the elected members attend even in the middle of the night to show solidarity with the transgender community in this time of deep sorrow, particularly in light of recent public trans vocal events. Point two, we also respectfully request that the council should declare that all council and public toilets under this control, where possible and practical, be designated as gender neutral and that by future, and that all future building or refurbishments of current council or public toilets should be gender neutral facilities across this city. We also ask that when issuing over new building or trade licences, that the creation of gender neutral toilets is a key requirement of the application process, we also ask that the toilets designers reflect this. Point three, we respectfully request that the council promote a positive attitude toward transgender people amongst its workforce and those agencies it works with, to ensure that the transgender community is not discriminated against or isolated when accessing local services or opportunities. Point four and final, we would like to take this final opportunity to express our support and solidarity with our sisters over the campaign to abolish VAT that is applied to all female sanitary products, these are essential to all women and girls and they are necessary for their civil and mental wellbeing, research by the Wake Up Always products showed that 50% of UK payers struggle to afford sanitary protection for their daughters, and more than 135,000 girls in this town are struggling each year because of period poverty. We request that the council weigh the local businesses to eliminate the application of VAT to zero percent VAT and to find an alternative way to reduce the cost of all sorts of products on sale in Liverpool, we feel that this as a city is something that we should take the lead on with the future, take internationally and to shame central government to reduce the borrowing tax you pay your child on certain products. Let's take this stance, be behind it and end period poverty in Liverpool, thank you for that, thank you so much.
Thank you, Dr Amy, the Lord Mayor called out several quotes recently from the Liverpool sisters.
I represent a group of ordinary women, we live ordinary lives with ordinary concerns, our central focus is on women's rights, the rights to same-sex provision, to privacy, dignity and equality, we have genuine concerns about a proposed change in law that will see these same sex provisions put at risk, the impact of self-ID will allow any man access to women-only spaces with legal impunity, simply on his face code, no checks and balances, no physical or medical treatments, no changes to his appearance. Self-ID means our daughters may be next to a man when she changes for swimming, self-ID means our mothers or grandmothers request for a female caregiver could result in a male providing to the care instead. Women don't have penises, this is not hate speech, it is not transphobia, it is a simple statement of biological fact. Yes, there are members of this council who have accused women in Liverpool of being hateful for standing by these words. Self-ID erodes vital safeguarding principles by preventing women and children from listening to their feelings of discomfort, which leads them to question their own instincts. Single-sex provision is a vital part of public life for women, children and indeed religious groups such as Judaism and Islam, I urge the council to do as Mayor Anderson himself said on BBC Radio, and listen with an open mind to all sides of this issue. A mature discussion is not only possible, it is vital, women are the majority stakeholders in this debate, and it is the only democratic and fair option to fully explore our concerns. The cross-party motion written by councillor Mary Doyle is well-heeded, but does not consider the complexity of self-ID and the full impact its implementation will have on Liverpool citizens, it does not consider the very real and pressing safeguarding concerns that self-ID raises, and it does not consider that everyone in this room, in this city and in this country has a responsibility to challenge any person or group that calls for a weakening of both safeguarding and equality frameworks. To endorse such phrase, "trans women are women", the council would be supporting self-ID on behalf of all people in Liverpool without consultation, without dialogue and without debate. Before this esteemed council, I ask you all to consider the interests of all parties, meet with women's groups and other organisations which exist to serve the needs and interests of women and children across the city, consider the needs for single-sex provisions, and why ordinary, everyday women are fighting so hard to retain them. Please, listen with an open mind to all sides, as recommended by Mayor Anderson himself, thank you.
Mayor Anderson, go and respond to the three speakers, thank you.
I'll respond, well, there's two speakers, I won't respond to Bishop Paul's comments, I'll address them in my presentation. Well, let's be clear, we've been accused by an organisation that put out what I believe to be offensive criticism, they then accused us in this council of not listening, and yet they've just addressed this council, and they have accused us of being afraid of having a debate or a discussion, well, that's what happened. And the issue for me and for everybody in this chamber is that the Gender Recognition Act, or what's happened with central government, is happening with central government, this council or this chamber have united against the behaviour of the resistors in defacing public art, in what I believe to be, and I'm proud to state, that was done in a hateful way, and the result of not only in transgender groups, individuals, including me, councillor Doyle and others, being subjected to torrents of abuse because of what was done, that isn't about equality, that isn't about fairness, that isn't about having an open debate, that's about bullying, that's about intimidation, and it's about proposing hate against people that are different, that's something that every single one of us in this council reject, and that's why you never got any applause, if you're approached in a different way and you want to have a sensible conversation and discussion with us, then we don't listen, and we won't tolerate abuse of members of this community that we respect, value and love, and when you get that in your head, then I'll sit down and meet with you and discuss with you, you're insane, until then, I won't be with you.
Thank you, Mayor Anderson, we're going to be at the council meeting, Mayor Anderson, I hope you can have some updates, thank you.
Lord Mayor, I'm not in here now, but I should have to die, yes, but I'm pretty sure because I don't want that, I don't see it, I don't see it now, I guess, critical to everybody will agree that if we move the motion, the trans motion, to accept it now, so at least people here can see that we're all united behind that motion and support it, so with your agreement, and I sit over there, can I move that, the suspense, if you like, and agree to agree the motion on the trans movement in the name of Harry Doyle, councillor Keever and all the others.
I'm going to agree, of course.
So then, Lord Mayor, if I could suggest to you then, that what you say is that agreed?
Agreed.
Okay, this is a presentation just on the inclusion growth, that is the agenda made, this looks like it's going to be one of those, don't be called the other house, the normal one, so I'll sit down on this one, I'll try it, so it's basically just an update on some of the things that I've got around, some of the things that I have, and also, as I said earlier, the inclusive growth, now, we've got a motion on the inclusive growth, and I just want to touch on that a little bit about what, I hope everyone has received and seen and read, the inclusive growth strategy, so basically, I'll come to a little bit more in detail about what it means, but the inclusive growth, it's important that we recognise the challenges ahead of us, but also what's gone on in the past, because what I need to constantly remind people is that the fund and cuts that we've had and the problems that we faced are not a length, they're actually continuing and they're going to continue, so, yeah, just very, very quickly, this is the council's situation, and I'll talk about the universal credit situation in a minute now, that impact, because it's important that people understand the link to that, but you know, we have an £11 million debt to pay every year based on what we inherited in 2010 in terms of debt, the unpaid bills, all of those things, and of course, the loss of the fund, but basically, I want to tell you about the debt that we face in terms of that £11 million, which I told you, I think, at the AGM. So, of course, this is the ninth year that we've faced cuts, we've still got £40 million to go, if you remember when we set the budget, we set the budgets over a three-year period, we've actually, well, let's talk, a year and a half, we've still got £40 million to go, we've made savings and they aren't going, and I'll come back to you in a second again about where we are with universal credit, and again, I know there's a debate around that, I'm just giving some views on that, but let's remember that central point about council tax awareness, and when I talk about it not being a blip, I remind people that £38 million that Chris will get more in council tax at the meeting, simply because they've got higher council tax bands and 70% of ours is in those bands. So it's some of the things that we've done, the pursuits, which more, I think, about some of the things that, if somebody said to me the other day, one of our senior colleagues, that they know, that there's no other city that's doing more to help people than we are, that's why, you know, when we say the services that we provide to homeless people and to others and all the stuff that we do, again, it's evidence in, I pay tribute to Jane Corbyn and also to our, we're with all the team, it's evidence in their, you do to support people, so, and it's an excellent, the excellent documents, and it's one that we will make sure everybody gets to see. But if you look, there's a mixture in this in terms of our achievements, but I just wanted, this is a little bit of a slide just on regeneration, because it's important to know how we are, if you like, viewed and bested here, because that's the point about it not being, you know, this is not a blip, it's about how we deal with growing the economy and creating new revenue to actually move us forward, so Festival Gardens in January, they'll be, we're starting in January, that, he contaminated some of the site, and then we look forward to building houses on that, other regeneration stuff, but of course, part of the housing will be to support foundations moving forward. But of course, part of the housing will be to support foundations moving forward. But we were criticised for taking over Festival Park, but we will use it and make it work for us as an important component. Some of the things around Pall Mall, a lot of criticism of the council around fixed gardens, as you can see, just in that visual, what we'll end up creating in Pall Mall is more space, more green space than what is currently available there. We're on going with that, again, it's an important part of the city moving forward in terms of regeneration. Then Cruz Line Terminal, in January, again, we demolished the jetty and worked starts on the Cruz Line Terminal and a new hotel. That's going next to that. Importantly, we've just completed our negotiations and discussions with the Aramah government and they are building a new terminal for the Aramah ferries as well. It's linked into a new road that will link it in from Lees Street into the waterfront that links up the Aramah Terminal with the Dock Road, allows us on to Lees Street to make better, to make better connectivity. That again, is underway, that start, that way, which links the waterfront. There's two aspects of that, one is the one that's already underway and there's going to be one a little bit later on further down the road and up the road. So, I think we're excited about foundations and we keep talking about it. I think it's going to be a really great opportunity for us. We'll be producing a brochure within the next few weeks that we'll be able to give to people. We'll show the different opportunities, the different standards of housing that will be available to people. That is creating, if you like, a tilt in the housing ladder which is against people to tip it. Can help people get on the housing ladder. I think it's be something that the city can be proud of when we've got it up and running. We're already starting on site, on a number of sites with many, many watercocks. So that's something that we'll be sharing with the other sites, but also the different models and the different opportunities for people moving forward. Paddocks and Villas, this is half a million pound worth of development, you know, with a couple of thousand jobs. This is the spine, this is the Royal College of Physicians, building £250,000 worth of development going on there. Next to that is a new four-star hotel. We've just also got a number of other people signed up on there, Catherine, a language school, Proton Authority moving into there on that particular site. There's some more visuals of some of the things that are going on. King's Dock in the car park, that is happening really soon, wait until after the Labour Conference, we're going on in September. We're actually doing that, so we'll be told when the conference ends, we'll start to work on that. And it is to build a bigger, a bigger car park than what's currently there, so that's happening. And then, this is just then coming back on to some of the problems that we face and some of the challenges that we face that links in to universal credit. If you look at it in terms of, you know, Aberdeen's cut in terms of austerity, £20,000, that's what, that's what is the output across the country for Liverpool, it's £712,000. You know all those things there about how one in three children that live in poverty, all the things, all the problems that we face. And this is how we spend our money and this is coming back to universal credit. Because it's absolutely a poor situation that we find ourselves in. And I do urge you to read this, 5,000 people have been on a pilot study, on a pilot scheme in northern Liverpool. 5,000 and as a result of that 5,000, we've spent around £2.7 million helping those people in all Liverpool. People who've been sanctioned, people who've been punished, people who've been waiting for benefits for over 12 weeks, 13 weeks, 14 weeks in some cases. We've actually been waiting and as a result of that, we've been given the support, £90,000 a week to stop them being evicted. We've been given the support through our citizen support scheme, our discretionary housing fund. All of those things are there, you see what we do and that's the point. Despite the challenges that we face and despite the severe problems that we face, there is no other city that is doing more than us. In fact, one of the local government journals rang us to point out the fact that there is no other city in the country, no other city in the country doing more than what we're doing to help people in the way that we do. The welfare reforms and how it is impacting on people, again, it's in this document, there's some really good case studies there. Well, let me just tell you, link it into the challenges that we face, because there's going to be 45,000 people who are going to transfer to universal credit, 45,000 people. And that means that Liverpool is going to have to step up to the plate and help people. Well, let me tell you what it actually already means for us, the challenges that we face in terms of the benefits system and how currently operates, I'm sorry if this is a bit off, I don't know whether anyone knows that. But at this current moment, Liverpool is owed £35 million in council tax. That's what we're owed, £35 million in council tax. £24.7 million, just under £25 million in council tax is owed by people who are in receipt of housing benefits. You let round that. Just under £25 million is owed to us, but it's owed to us by people who are in receipt of benefits. So how can we then take people to court, pay bailers? It's just not something that not only will we not do, but we can't do, it's immoral, it's wrong. And so, again, not only we are one of the poorest cities in the country in terms of the fact that we've got less money coming in and we've got a higher demand, but also now faced with a situation where we've got huge chunks of money owed to us by people who can't pay. And that's a fact of life and that's why it's important that this message about universal credit is taught. Because the unintentional consequences of universal credit is more and more kids living in poverty, more and more people dependent on us for help, more and more people asking us for help, begging us for help. And if we don't help them, then the reality is, is that most of them can be evicted. And then it picks up the pieces, it's Liverpool City Council, again, that has to pick up the pieces. We have to win this argument and that's why I'm absolutely delighted, absolutely delighted that Bishop Paul, our Bishop Malcolm are all supporting our call for a pause. Because unless you understand the unintended consequences, unless you understand that it's going to add more pain, more hate and more pressure on us to sing, if you don't understand that, then you fail to recognise what you claim is the benefits of moving to universality. It's just not working, it is just not happening. And the very fact that we've got that evidence from the trial, the 5,000 that we've piloted, this isn't some rhetoric political posture, this is evidence-based. What Jay Corbett's produced and what Mark's produced and what is in this document is evidence-based. It's based on the pilot study, it's based on the facts. So it is not something that we're talking out of the air. The testimonies and the facts and the case studies are actual and they need to be recognised as such. And if we can, I think, take this message, not only ourselves as a council, but with others and other councils, but with the trade unions, with the Labour Party, with other political parties too. If we make that case and we make that case powerfully and strongly based on that evidence, then we might be able to get a pause and that's why I urge it in Kempen and others to actually make sure that they too are right behind this campaign to pause universal credit because it is damaging and it is damaging to the people of this city. And so it was to actually make that, if you like, revelation, because it's important that we understand it. Because as we're trying to fight to make the savings through the cuts that are getting implemented to us by central government, pervasely, we are also then struggling because of the benefits that this movement is introducing universal credit means that we can't get the money in to pay for other services because people simply can't afford to pay. And we are not going to go and attach anyone's statements to people who are on benefits and take £3.70 off to their benefits. And then what happens is when the, it's in a stack-up system. It's in a stack-up system. That means that our demand, if you like, is down the system and there will be other people ahead of us. So we're not going to add to the burden of people by giving a £100 bill because we bring in bailers to something that they can't pay anyway. So it just simply is not going to happen. So that is, you know, all of those there that we can make these available to you, 40,000 are behind in council tax payments. Liverpool in terms of the court costs or whatever, the lowest it can possibly pay, we don't send in bailers, we do not refer debts to bailers like others do. And as I said, that report itself talks about the new claims nationally, where we are, the number of people, 55,000 people. All of these will be sent here, this presentation, so you can see it yourself. So coming back to, and I just briefly talked about the inclusive growth plan and our transnational plan and how they're doing. And it is quite simply this, that if we want to accept the fact that what we face, the challenge that we face is not a blip, then we have to do something differently. We have to look at what we spend, where we spend it, how we spend it and how we can get a better bank for our book. And that's where the big conversation, our conversation with the community through you as councillors comes in, how we can look at, how we can maximise all the fund and all the money that we spend in a particular locality, how we work with the RSLs, how we work with the policy sector, how we work with other people who make contributions in our community, how we can unite, how we can support each other. Because believe me, one thing that is absolutely clear, absolutely clear, is that universal credit and the role that's of universal credit and what is happening with this country in terms of rights. People are going to be more and more reliant on us going forward and we simply have not got the resources or the money to do anything about it.